Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Mid-11th Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the November 25th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Today, I'm going to read 1 Peter 3 verses 10 through 12. "If you want to enjoy life and see many happy days, keep your tongue from speaking evil and your lips from telling lies. Turn away from evil and do good; search for peace and work to maintain it. Thides of the Lord watch over those who do right, and his ears are open to their prayers; but the Lord turns his face to those who do evil." And I have the dog from the kennel this morning.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel?
It's all about you.
So moved.
Second.
It is about you.
Discussion.
Is Tom talking about speaking evil?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Just in time for the holidays, he's ready to go today.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
He was a little pug mix, he's about four years old.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
He was found in Elyria, he's really super sweet.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel, excuse me, authorize various
Makes somebody a great Thanksgiving Day present, so if you want to come down and pick him
personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of
up.
Lorraine County Commissioners?
We have 26 dogs, 26 dogs to choose from, so before you shop, adopt, and come to our Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I would request a brief executive session, some potential new hires over at the collection
kennel and pick him up, take him home.
center, potential sale and purchase of real estate, and ongoing labor negotiations.
Great dog.
All three topics are allowable under the sunshine after executive session discussions. So at the conclusion of regular board meetings, I request we go into the exact session and talk about those three items. Thank you.
Thank you. Approve waive the reading in the minutes of November 18th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an easement agreement with NRG Ohio Pipeline Company LLC, a Delaware Limited Under resolutions, number one, investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
liability company, for a 50 feet wide perpetual non-exclusive easement along with a temporary Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
to install on 20 mile pipeline from Avon Lake to Grafton. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
The right-of-way is between Route 10 and Butternut Ridge Road, Eaton Township, and Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
bore 40, 50 feet under road. No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Discussion.
Second.
Ms. Kowski? Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, I saw that you requested that they give us some money for this right-of-way.
Ms. Rolandee?
Did we get an answer to that?
We did. We received a standard rate. Their position was they usually get free right-of-way on municipal or government lands. My position was that taxpayers deserve to get paid like everybody else.
Free?
Well, that's what they said. I didn't really bother myself with researching whether that was an accurate statement or just self-serving. It didn't really matter to me. And since, also since the pipeline has had foes and proponents, I thought that opposition should be rather neutral, which is where we've been with that subject, and I didn't want to suggest we give them a free right of passage, which would indicate that, you know, we were 100% on board, because some residents really just are not satisfied with the process. But right now, they've slowed down, but I can tell you, I've met with representatives of NRG. The pipeline is still a reality. We read some articles in one of the papers a while back that they were shelving the pipeline, but that's not the case. I believe they're waiting on the Nexus line to come through. They've indicated to me they've been in discussions with Nexus for Nexus to be a supplier to NRG, which will give them an advantage, because the pipeline is so expensive. So any rumors that the pipeline is completely dead are inaccurate.
Forty to 50 feet below the road, it's, I didn't realize they went that deep.
It's a pretty big build. I know if it was coming right next to my house, I wouldn't be a happy camper. But that said, lots of people live by pipelines now, they don't even quite realize that they're there, and there'll be an increased tax base from the pipeline, because they pay property tax on that value on the pipe that's in the ground. So it'll be interesting to see how that all shakes out at the end of the day.
Okay.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under community development, award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from CHIP program year 14 home repair, which includes contingency for any unforeseen change orders, and this being the most responsive. Homeworks General Contractors, Inc., for a million amount of $8,690 for Patricia Scott at 302 North Pleasant Street, Oberlin, for roof, gutter, and downspout replacement and fascia repairs. J.A. Kilby Enterprises, North Ridgeville, in the amount of $7,535 for Robert and Linda Ritz at 183 Hamilton Street, Amherst, for roof, gutter, and downspout replacements and fascia repairs and removal of chimney. And Jen Mint Construction, Lorraine, in the amount of $5,720 for Judith Nottingham, 296 South Professor Street, Oberlin, for foundation wall repairs, downspout extensions, splash blocks, and sidewalk and step replacement.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, there's just one correction, I'm not sure, Don. Number one, the Patricia Scott, the auditor has her listed as Patricia Ellis. I don't know if we have it wrong, or if the auditor's office has it incorrect, if we need to change that?
Patricia Ellis, Ellis was her maiden name, and she is married now, so there probably needs to be a correction on the, at the auditor's website that hasn't been...
Well, it probably doesn't need a correction, she probably just wants to keep the housing her name. Smart idea these days. But, you know, as long as we can lean the property, that's not a problem. So you'll probably need a document in the package clarifying acceptance.
Yeah, and we do, it was actually on note that her maiden name is Ellis, that, so we were aware of the difference in the name.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve Donald B. A. Year Associates LLC, Lancaster, as provider of fair housing services and compliance with CDBG fiscal year 15, in amount of $10,000 if you pay from contract services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, do we have a minimum bid on this property? Or is it just...
You know, it's a, I'm going to let Don speak to it, because we were going to rehab this property, then it became, well, we determined that the rehab really wasn't going to be very effective, so we demoed the property. But now we have to try to dispose of the property. We don't think we're going to be successful in disposing of it, but we're required to make that attempt.
That's why there was no picture when I looked it up, because there's no house there anymore?
Correct.
That would be accurate if we demoed it. Now I know why you're a Commissioner.
Yeah, so, per the limitations of Ohio Revised Code, we really only have one way to dispose of property. This is an unbuildable lot in the city of Lorraine on Canton Avenue. As Mr. Cortez had stated, we actually took a look at a wide variety of ways to either bring that house back, or to even put a new one on, and it just was not financially feasible. These funds are, this whole project was through the NSP Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and there are no requirements for minimums of any kind, and quite honestly, I think the best solution for everyone would be if one of the neighbors were to take it, or ideally both neighbors came to an agreement to split the property and add, so that we'd have eventually two conforming lots on that street.
Well, you have two conforming lots, and you reintroduce the property back into productive tax base. It's not significant, because it'd just be additional, a small amount of additional land, but as Don said, we don't really possess the tools under the Revised Code to deal with this. First, we have to offer it out for sale. Or we could offer it out for bid and avoid that whole process by getting an auction going on it. Once it clears waivers, then we have a little bit more of an opportunity to do something with it.
Right.
And you're going to see this more and more with regard to some of these offering properties as we start dealing with them through the land bank. They're not as burdened as using the federal dollars like this one was, but we're definitely going to have properties that are going to remain offerings for quite a while.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under job and family, authorized purchase service group with All Service Telecommunications Corp. to provide a telephone answering service for the Adult Protective Services Unit during nine business hours. This is effective January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $1,380. Authorized director to execute amendment for changes in the program and content increase with prosecutors approved as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under sanitary repair plan specifications and tentative assessments pursuant to request of Pheasant Run Association, Ohio Revised Code 6117.06C.
Do you want to give us an update on the Pheasant Run?
I can, and I think Mr. Ennis may want to chime in, he's been hugely instrumental in trying to keep the legal end of this on track for me, and you. I think we're ready to go. LaGrange appears to be ready to go. The homeowners association seems to be, I keep saying seems, because every time I give you an affirmative, something has popped out and delayed us. But right now, they're not legally challenged. That may change. I did talk to one of the lot owners down there on the undeveloped lots, and they're having some problems again with the association, but I distanced myself from that whole conversation, because we need to proceed ahead with the 550 homes that we're going to serve. The remaining 300 lots, whatever happens with them, that's going to be their issue. So I think we're good. The timeframe has moved from June of '17, we're optimistic that we can be done in December of '17 because of these delays. But it would not surprise me if we ran into an unforeseen situation, especially with the onsite work, that we know the majority of the dollars, you would think is going to the Forest Main Sewer up to LaGrange, it's not. The majority is going to onsite repair, because they're in such incredibly poor condition. I thought Eaton Estates, what we have down there, was pretty bad, and that's something I'll be talking to you about in January, because the EPA came in and did an inspection, they're putting a few, they wouldn't have any orders and findings, but we have a few more mandates on things we have to do down there. But Eaton Estates is in pristine condition compared to Pheasant Run. So it's going to get, it's going to get difficult. As you know, we still have yet to have the hearings and all the things that have to be done. We're comfortable that the association representing the population down there had the governance and legal authority to request and us to work with them on putting the sewers down there, but we're still going to have public hearings, and we're probably going to go, as we've talked, from being their savior and them coming to us, to, you know, being the dogs, because we're going to assess those properties, and the assessments are going to be sizable. They don't have any choice, though. At the end of the day, you're still bailing them out. Jerry, you want to?
Yeah, well, we got the easement issues worked out. We had to amend the agreement, and Teresa, I think we passed that, didn't we? Okay. And LaGrange Village has passed an amendment change. We originally had the completion date for June of 2017, so now we're moving to December of 2017. So now the engineers have to do all the detailed work and then come back with us to go through the hearings. We have been in discussions with council for the association about how we can meet with and inform the residents of the association, get them prepared for this, and don't spring it on them in any way, so we're not going those conversations. I also understand they are meeting with the EPA very shortly, and the EPA wants to know what they're doing, so we've indicated, you know, we'll let them know what we plan to do on this.
Now to, before anybody asks, I know you will, or you will in the future soon, we are seeking grant assistance every place we can. Grants for sewers have become more and more challenging. I do believe we can get some very low-interest loans, better than what we could borrow at, because they subsidize the rates on some of those, you know, there's USDA, there's several things that we're looking to do. So if we can't get any direct assistance, and our CDBG funds, even though they may be low to moderate down there, are not going to be significant enough to make much for dent down in Pheasant Run. But I'll work with Don on an additional ask for potential CDBG funds, we're going to do the USDA, we're looking everywhere, but I'm almost certain that we'll get some lending rates in the 1.5%, 1% on, rather than direct grants, maybe just a top out of two, which right now, outside of construction bar, and we're still seeing rates in the high threes on bonding completely. So we're going to do whatever we can to get some assistance to those homeowners down there, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be as big as I'd like it to be, and that's a moderate neighborhood down there, but they have problems. And Jerry's right, the only reason they're not under EPA orders and findings and fines right now is because the EPA is well aware of the work we're doing with them, and has tried to not put them in even a more challenging situation, because their package plan's been failing for a decade or more down there.
How old is the infrastructure there, the sewers?
It's terrible.
Seventies?
Seventies?
Oh, how old, like I said, how is it? I'm sorry.
No, how old?
Early seventies.
Well, yeah, early seventies. The Pheasant Run started more as a trailer park model, ma-a-park, double wides, single wides. Became a home development, there was a lot of homes built down there of moderate income, but they're nice homes, it's a nice area, but the infrastructure is old, it wasn't the best when it was put in. Most of the laterals are failing, the INI is just horrendous down there. The plan is overtaxed even without the INI, and you had the INI, and they're just overwhelmed down there. Part of the problem we're going to have is that we have, we're fixing the roads and all the infrastructure in the right-of-way, and then we're going to convert the package plan over to an equalization tank, because you need an equalization system on a force main pumping system. So we're going to size that for the whole 850 potential homes that will, can be there when they see full build out there. Haven't been able to build, because there's no access to sewers. The problem is, we don't, we're not, we don't, we're dancing around it. We have not allocated funds for fixing laterals, and there's going to be a lot of homeowners that are going to have to fix their laterals. We've got a lot of INI coming in from failed laterals. Most laterals built in the early, mid, even into the eighties, probably, were built with clay tile. They're notorious for breaking, cracking, leaking. The PVC is also susceptible, but not as much as the clay tile. That is our big problem down Eaton Estates. About 85% of the laterals are failing, we're videoing them, every one of them, cataloging them, and we're getting ready to make a big run on them next year. Average lateral reliner is about $5,000. Even if you bulk buy, we, one of our package plants, we have a bunch of them failing, so we had the company come out and do a demo reline. They did it for free on one of the homes, so we could show the homeowners how it worked, how they sleeve the old lateral, even that's still around $4,000 to do. And when you get into, when you look at the homes, and then you got the assessment for the sewer, and then you have to fix a lateral, there's going to be a lot of people in distress. But we don't have, mindful, we have no choice. We just can't go in there, hook in, and take all that INI, because we're going to be masted, beat it up at Grafton, and everything that's not coming from where it's supposed to come from is going to cost us money, and it's going to cost the residents money, and then of course, Grafton can only accept so much INI under their permitting process, so it's not as easy as just building a pipe and opening a valve. That's where we're at, Commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under style waste, per the 2016 Open Dump Enforcement Agreement with Sheriff, at a cost of not to exceed $199,263.15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandee?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Do you want to do Bill Grace?
Sure. Bill Grace, would you like to come up and talk to us about your Main Street?
Good morning.
Good morning, Bill.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Cortez, Mr. Ennis, Teresa, thanks for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Happy to speak about downtown a little bit, as opposed to storms, storm sewers, and infiltration and all those things, those are all familiar terms that, not fun discussions. Well, I'm here to speak very briefly, just to kind of reintroduce myself in a different format. I've been recently hired as the Director for Main Street Elyria, of which, we're the neighborhood of which you're our biggest tenant here, and so I want to reemphasize there's been a longstanding tradition between the county and Main Street, is the Commissioners have had a position, they're an appointment to the Board of Main Street Elyria, that hasn't been, you haven't submitted, there hasn't been a person last couple of years, so I'm here to kind of reopen that invitation, and we'd love to have you back on our Board, and you'll get a formal invitation here again, you know, to invite you back to our Board. We'd very much like to have you part of our day-to-day discussions, and how we can work, you know, and how we can help you in this neighborhood. So we've been, I came on in August, and in the time, these last several months, we spent a great deal of time of updating a lot of our internal documentation, our code of regulations, our Articles of Incorporation with the state of Ohio, and building back up our Board of Directors. And so this is a really perfect transition time, that it would be great to have the Commissioners re-engaged in joining, rejoining our efforts in making this neighborhood a great place. So just wanted to say hello, we'll be in touch, I'm sure, through Mr. Cortez and you individually, as times and circumstances present, but again, I just wanted to say hello, let you know that I'm wearing the Main Street Elyria banner, and we're here to be as strong of a partner with you as we can.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Some discussion, was it a voting member or a non-voting member?
Voting member, yes, full membership, yes. And it'll be a position that you will, at your discretion, determine who you'd like, whether it's one of your own or anyone else, and you can change that over time, whatever, but it'll be at your discretion.
Okay.
All righty?
I had a chance to attend your meeting over a week ago, it was a packed house over at the community meeting room for the police, at the police department, and a lot of very engaged members of the community were there, and they're very excited. I know I'm excited about Main Street coming back to life, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. In fact, we, a year ago, we had approximately 85 community members in the organization, now we're a little over 200, so we're on a really nice upswing. Yeah.
Good for you. Keep it going, Bill.
Yeah, hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cortez?
Thank you. Good to see you, Bill, thanks for coming up. The, well, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. After today, hopefully everybody's going to have a long and happy weekend, and those that are fortunate get to be with family and friends. It begins a whole season of family and friends and credit cards. So I hope that everybody has a very big feast lined up. I have one thing I want to pass to Commissioner Kokoski. Usually I sign these, but, you know, as an update, maybe you should take a look at that. That was your initiative with 911 that we worked on together with the, what we call the reverse 911 system, with alerting residents. We're finally getting into the deep-fork pockets of the community, that's Kipton, their whole bill is $12 a year. But it's been a successful uniting of the corners of the community, remembering that each resident is five cents for each resident covered in a particular jurisdiction. Some of our larger jurisdictions were paying 50 and 60 cents a resident before we undertook this, the Board of Commissioners, to provide a centralized service through the 911 system, and then allow everybody to come onto our contract at a reduced cost. We've been picking up the five cents for every resident as we've made these MOUs and contracts with these jurisdictions. I'll get you a report on how many we have, there's a few, there was a couple of townships that didn't think there was any value to them. You know, one of them is a budding city of Lorraine, remain unnamed, but I'm hopeful that at the end of the day, we'll have all the communities on board with the reverse 911 system. Also, I want to get you an update on the New World application and the software, some of it's been beta-tested, it's been heavily tested now in a couple of the police departments out there. We're running behind. I had hoped for a launch by now, we've had some issues with integrating the data out of the jail, and doing the data conversion. I'm in a bit of a dust-up with New World trying to establish some dates. They seemingly think that we'll wait on them, and I think that they obviously haven't really done business down here very, too much, and I'm not happy with the progress we're making. Not all the delays have been theirs, some of them have, some of them have been ours, but I'm trying to establish sometime in January, and they're being very challenging to deal with, pushing into February, I don't like it. That still puts us a couple of months behind where we thought we'd be going completely live, so I want to update you on that in the next couple of weeks, after I, I may have to drive to Michigan and press my issue, which I have no problem doing. But so far, everything is looking really good for those folks that have made the conversion and are doing a big, big beta-check and starting to use the software. If everything goes right to the end of January, we'll all do a combined reception, open house, invite everybody that's on board, we'll do it down at the EMA, go into the 911 center, see what's what, so I'm looking forward to that, because that's another uniting of the community. Few folks that we don't do 911 for that are with Westcom on the eastern side of the border are still in our record software and our New World software, so, you know, collaborations aren't huge every time, they're built with small pieces, and then one day you wake up and you find that the full partnership is really working well for you. So it's a very exciting time, but I do have to confess that we are delayed there. This has been great, and Commissioner, maybe we'll just get a ceremonial resolution authorizing Kipton to join, and you can be proud of, because this, the Board gave Commissioner Kokoski to lead on this with the support of the Board, and it's been, it's been fun.
It has, yeah. And hopefully, we're getting the word out for people, how to sign up for this. I know I put it on my Facebook, maybe I should do it again, because anybody could sign up for these notifications, and it's really good.
Sorry.
That doesn't happen up here very often, maybe you're getting an alert.
There you go, it's a reverse 911.
As far as the 911 goes, I read in the paper this morning, city of Lorraine's looking at some financial issues going into next year, maybe time to talk to them about coming on board with us to do their dispatching.
I've already had the conversations with the mayor, I can generally say that we're looking at some ability to work collaboratively together. It's a very sensitive issue, that's going to require a very amount of delicate conversation, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but opportunities have been seen, and they have been discussed.
We'll end it with a fire, I would expect.
The, you know, I, anything that we can do to unite the services in this community, we're going to do. We've always have been willing to do that, but various local issues sometimes put up barriers. The one thing we do is we never lose a clear line of sight to what the objective is, and the objective is regional services.
And we're always willing to partner, but those are local decisions, too. They have to come to us saying they want to partner.
Right.
We're willing to partner.
Anything else?
I just give you that, and my comments are done, but...[1680.23] But this has been great, and Commissioner, I, maybe we'll just get a ceremonial resolution authorizing Kipton to join, and, and you can be proud of, because this, the Board gave Commissioner Kokoski the lead on this, with, with the support of the Board, and it's been, it's been fun.
It has, yeah. And hopefully, we're getting the word out for people, how to sign up for this, I, I know I put it on my Facebook, maybe I should do it again, um, because anybody could sign up for these notifications, and it's really good. Sorry. That doesn't happen up here very often, maybe you're getting an alert.
There you go, it's a reverse nine-one-one.
Uh, as far as the nine-one-one goes, I read in the paper this morning, city of Lorraine's looking at some financial issues going into next year, may be time to talk to them about coming on board with us to do their dispatching.
I've already had the conversations with the mayor, uh, I can generally say that, that we're we're, we're looking at some ability to work collaboratively together. It's a very sensitive issue, that's gonna require a very, amount of delicate conversation, and I don't wanna speak for the mayor, but, but, but opportunities have been seen, and they have been discussed.
Oh, we'll end it with a fire, I would expect.
The, the, uh, you know, I, anything that we can do to unite the services of this community, uh, we're going to do, we've always have been, uh, willing to do that. But various local issues sometimes put up barriers, the one thing we do is we never lose a clear line of sight to what the objective is, and the objective is regional services.
Yeah, we're always willing to partner, but those are local decisions, they have to come to us, saying they wanna partner.
Right.
We're willing to partner.
Anything else?
I, I just give you that, and, and my comments are done, but.
Um, can we do a resolution in, uh?
To put them on?
To put them on? Oh, you need to sign this?
Yes. No, he's asking you to sign it.
I, I can sign it, there's no real, I just wanted to let you know how well this is.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Well, did you wanna make that motion?
Yes, I make a motion to add Eaton to our, or Kipton to our, to our list of partners.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandie?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Cortez?
I, I think I've said more than enough.
Mr. Ennis?
Uh, I have a couple of brief updates regarding pending allegation, uh, for executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Uh, last Thursday, all three of the Commissioners, we went to Valor Home in Lorraine to stock their shelves with unused food that we had from Golden Acres. They were very grateful, and we were glad to be able to help them out with that. Uh, right now, they have twenty-seven veterans that they're housing there, and I talked to a few of them, and they're, like, said it's a godsend, and they're very happy, uh, that it's available to them. Um, I wasn't able to make the open house that you guys went to, that, so I did get a tour of the facility after you guys left, and it's a really nice place. Congratulations to the veterans for making that happen.
Commissioner, you do know that I'm holding perishables for them, too. They, uh, they needed dry goods badly.
Right.
They're, but they didn't have, and they still need additional capacity at the Valor Home, uh, so when, when, when they have some available room, we'll bring the, the perishables over, I have them in deep freeze out of Golden Acres, and we'll, we'll move that over to them when, when the time is right.
Yeah. And then, at two o'clock that same day, we had our planning commission meeting that we all attended. Tuesday, yesterday, budget hearings, uh, three or so hours worth of listening, no, uh, big surprises, but it's gonna be a very difficult year next year. Saturday, the, what day? Pet rescue, I think it's this Saturday, maybe it's next Saturday, shoot, I didn't put the date on here. Pet rescue's gonna be at Pet Supplies Plus in Elyria. Uh, Santa's gonna be there to take pictures with your four-legged friends, and you will get a four-by-six photo for ten dollars, proceeds will go to help rescue dogs in danger of being put down at, uh, various shelters, including our, our dog kennels, so, and I believe it's next Saturday, not this Saturday, so I'll let you know for sure next week. End of my report.
Commissioner, covered basically everything we've worked on, again, the budget hearings went well, everyone presented, and now we just gotta figure out how we're going to fund all of that for next year, so. A happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and please keep, uh, in mind those who can't be with their family and friends for the holiday, those serving overseas and in difficult positions. End of my report.
Uh, first, wanted to thank, uh, Don Romancik and Community Development for the contractors' meeting that they held at the Transportation Center with the rehab work we're doing on the homes, trying to get the word out to the contractors, that there's, uh, I guess, between the resources we have and the resources of the city of Elyria lumped together, it's about a million dollars that's out there that's going to be spent on, um, helping to fix up some of these homes, and, uh, just wanna make sure the local contractors know about it, and if you're, um, seeing this show, and you'd like to know more, do give us a call here, and we'll keep you updated on how you can get involved in that. I enjoyed going over the Valor Home with my colleagues, and, uh, stocking the, uh, the shelves over there. Commissioner Kayla wasn't convinced that I could operate a dolly, but he also didn't know about my former experience as a stock boy convenience food mart, so, uh, so I had to prove that I could wheel that dolly around.
Did a great job, Commissioner.
Well, thank you, thank you.
You have a future after.
I do have a future after. But, uh, and I wanna thank, you know, County Administrator and the whole staff for, uh, thinking ahead on this whole thing with how we could best utilize what's remaining at Golden Acres to help out the community, and and, believe me, the Valor Home was very happy to see those supplies. Attended the Township Association meeting, uh, that was held at Second Harvest. Wanna say, uh, a good job to Pat Echo, she is moving on from holding the, uh, the presidency rank there with the Township Association, and Amy Semanza is coming on as the new president of Township Association, so congratulations to her. I had the opportunity to fill in for my brother at a turkey raffle at Saint Mary's in Avon, who was the announcer there for that, and I know Ted's probably thinking, takes a turkey to announce a turkey raffle? But, uh, but that went very well, I think they gave away like ninety-two turkeys and a hundred and two hams. It was a really, really nice event, first time I had a chance to, to be there. Just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, we all have a lot to be thankful for, and only two words for Saturday, beat Michigan.
Um, Tuesday, December first, nine-thirty, we're gonna have our hearing on the Gore Finage Ditch.
Uh, move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandie?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
No, anybody? Seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Rolandie?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' general meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.